So I am going to start the meeting. Today is September 26, 2023, and it's about 6:04. And welcome. And so our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And the flag is in the corner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Denise, would you be willing to start us? Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which is stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Denise. Lots when you're in the line of my sight. Just kind of pick on people on random. So our next thing on our agenda is recognition and participation of visitors and delegations. And at some point, Catherine, we're going to have you and your other, the other finalists for the Martin Luther King to kind of come and talk about their stuff, but we're not going to do that today.
Okay.
And the next thing that's on our agenda is the comments from the citizens. And this is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. And each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less. And citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments of citizens' portion of the board meeting. And citizens should make their presentation. We don't have a podium. We are central office today. But if anyone here would like to make a presentation, please just kind of, I guess, stand or at least state their names and address for the record. Is there anyone in this, in this space that would like to make a presentation or comment? Is there anyone who is online and Zoom that would like to make a presentation? Ms. Jones, did we get any notification of people wanting to speak to the meeting?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Hey, it was good. I think I almost said that just so that I could hear your voice. All right, so hearing no comments from citizens, we have to be moving on to the fifth part of our agenda, which is student representative report. And I see that we actually have two of our student representatives. And so since this is the beginning of the school year, I think what I would like to do is I would like to have the board members and the staff that are located here just to sort of introduce themselves to both of the, to both the student representatives. And then I would love to hear about what's going on. It's, it's good to see you. Hope you're somewhere well. Great. All right. So Rita, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, yes. Good evening. My name is Rita Volkman, and I'm a member of the Groton Board of Education. Welcome.
Beverly?
Hi, I'm Beverly Washington.
And Jay?
He may be in transit.
I do believe that he is in transit. So that is Jay, that he's on the bottom right. He has much more color to him than what his name has, but that is Jay. And then William? Well, Zoe was with us last year. Yeah, I know.
I'm not showing them on the board.
Oh, it's wonderful to meet you. And Sue's not, and I kind of know you both. So I'm Kim Shepherdson Watson, and I'm a board member and also the chair of the board. And?
Principal.
Maybe not. I'm one of the supervisors of special ed. Senior little director to personnel.
They like to do business manager.
Yeah, so it's, I think, oh. But great. Good, good, good. And so this is the piece where we, along with all other members of the Board of Education throughout the state of Connecticut, have student representatives, hopefully most of them have student representatives, that kind of keep the board honest and also kind of helps us keep the pulse of what's really happening in the district. Because the job of the board is to help establish policy about what happens within our school district. And so this is a way of kind of having that check and balance about how we're doing. And I'll be more than happy to talk to both of you offline at some other point about what are the ways? I know that you were very busy, both of you. But if there are other ways that you guys or other meetings that you could attend, that you could have your voice. We have had in the past very active student representatives who were really helped shape what we were thinking and talking about and eventually our policy of what was happening in the district. So we value your voice and we value what is being said. So I welcome the two of you. And I do believe for the rest of the board, there are actually four representatives and five. Five representatives. Oh, cool. Okay. So that we can, we might be seeing probably rotation. And once again, I think that we can kind of all figure that out. But so that, so for the boards that we've been for the past couple of years since COVID, we've often had times when we haven't had your voice. And so it's good to know that this year we're going to have lots of voices. And so I think that's great. And so I think that's sort of the establishment of the ground which we lay on. But Zoe, since you are our seasoned, excuse me, our seasoned, if you would like to just kind of talk about what's been happening.
Zoe.
I don't think we can hear you, Zoe. And I think unfortunately, that's what your father was saying. And I hate to say that sometimes your dad could be correct. I hate, I hate making that same announcement.
So things are elementary school is starting to think every month they take like positive traits for students to kind of look at. And September is for respect, so they, they talk about it in like their classes. And then at the end of the month, the teachers nominate students or a couple of students that have really exhibited that trait. And then they get like a recognition for it. Charles Barnum is starting their discovery clusters, which I was not aware of. I thought it was pretty interesting. Things like theater, problem solving, gardening, things like that. And there are world language classes that also start for a whole grade. Or this academy is having an open house this evening at 5 o'clock. Well, I guess it started about an hour ago. And then they're having their annual UCL picnic, which I remember when I went to NEA. And then Mystic River School has started something new, something sort of like Thane's River, where every month they choose something to focus on. And Mystic River, September is for courage, so you know. Follow that throughout the month. And then at the end of the month, the teachers nominate kids to kind of, you know, do that like extra. Just, you know, for better. Yeah. And so they, so they get those for like recognition. And then for Fitch, we are in the middle of spirit week. It's, you know, day two, but it's been going pretty well. And we have a lot of school pride, a lot of active students with it.
Zoe, thank you.
Oh, hi. I don't know if anyone can hear me. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Catherine Keegan. I am a senior Fitch. I am also a part of the ID program, and I am also a proud MLK scholar. I'm a Dr. Michael B. Martin, junior scholar. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, so Zoe, I actually just, I just came from the Mystic River Open House. For, I volunteered there for an hour, just helped to set up. It was going quite smoothly. It was fun to see all the little kids faces. And it was funny how Zoe mentioned that the honoring a certain attribute. Because mine is she goes to Mystic River and she got one at like June, and she was so proud and happy that she was like, I got like a certificate. And I'm like, awesome. Yes, so we are in the middle of spirit week. A lot of pride amongst seniors. The freshmen are kind of like, they're little, this is their slight high school spirit weeks. They're kind of like in the shadows, but I'm hoping that they come out of their show. Homecoming is just around the corner. Very exciting, exciting days. Everyone looking forward to it. And yes, that's all I could think of right now. So thank you.
Are there any questions from the board about?
I just want to know, how is the playlist, the Dr. Phil Fiazah playlist going? Getting you guys jazzed up in the morning. Be honest.
I, we were quite shocked to hear that. And just one day, I just feel like, oh. But it is, it is nice to like, there's something fun and something.
Yes, yes.
That's my goal.
Yeah.
Although the music is a little dated.
I know. Well, I think you need to. Yes, I was, I actually recommended that you play some ABBA. Because I had a meeting with them earlier today and dancing.
Inside scoop. So maybe we'll hear that tomorrow. We started on September 21st with Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, September.
Yeah.
And start back at the bone.
We are hearing the teachers were dancing in the hallway.
Yeah.
That had to be a second.
All right, thank you. I know that the two of you have very busy lives, so feel free to stay. But if you do not, if you can't stay or whatever, you're more than welcome to head out whenever you want to. But please feel free and welcome to participate in any of the discussion. So, but it's, it's great to see you guys. So the next part is that we're going to do superintendent and assistant superintendent report. But let me just lay, put the lay of the land once again for people. So if you noticed on our monthly, not tracking sheet, our monthly sheet, we talked about the fact that we were going to have our data. And so what we've, so in September, we were going to have the district wide. And then in October, we are going to have, we're going to start to get more into the specifics. So we're going to start off hearing about a very generalized view about how the district is doing in terms of the student data. And then start next, next week, we are going to correct, next week at the committee of the whole, we are going to be here. Yeah, it's in two weeks. It's our first committee of the whole, whenever that is. I think it's October 10th, and it's also going to be on a Tuesday. It'll be here. I'll say that for myself. And we are going to be hearing from the secondary schools. We're going to be hearing from the middle school, and we're going to be hearing from the high school. And it's going to be one of those now, so what, now what? So taking the data that we've heard about in this meeting and then getting down to more sort of what are we going to do about that data? What does that data mean? And then the next in November, the first committee of the whole in November, we are going to then hear from principals and staff from the elementary schools answering the same question. So we're first today, it's just going to be this overshot of what, what is, what does our data look like on a district wide compared to us to our, to previous years and to other, into other districts? And then we're going to get the more specifics in the, in the, the next committee of the whole and then the first committee of the whole meeting in November. Our next thing that we're going to be talking about is we are, there's a new law that's going to be in place or is in place.
Legislation.
Legislation that is now in place that changes the scope of our kindergarten or age range. And so I just thought that it would, especially since we are going to be going into a budget season, that it's really important to, one, understand what this legislation is, understand what this means for us both in year one and then also in the following years. And so I do see that I have our support team here thinking about that. So I wanted to kind of put the lay of the land that that's what we should be expecting from this conversation tonight is one, to kind of like get an understanding about what this new kindergarten legislation means to us. And what do we, what do we do about funding? And what do we do about spacing? And I think that that might be an issue, not necessarily this year, but maybe down, down, down the road. And so just be thinking about that. But also to understand that tonight is going to be the balcony view of our data. How did I do? You did really well.
All right. I will just say also that the principals will come to you with grade by grade data. They'll have it disaggregated, so you'll see an even deeper dive into the data when the principals come. As long as the so what, now what are we going to do about it? And what kind of plans do we have for intervention based on the data? So to give you a little bit of that multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS they call it. Used to be SRBI, but we keep renaming things in education and giving them acronyms.
So I am going to now pass the meeting baton over to both Phil and Susan. I'm kind of the thumber between two voices.
That's not true. All right. So this is our past year's data, the data that students took the Sback test in grades three through eight in both literacy, ELA and math, and the SAT in grade 11. And then also the Next Generation Science Standards in fifth, eighth and 11. And so we look at a performance index, which really is a summative assessment across all grade levels. And it's converted into a common scale. And we call it kind of the target or the goal. And every district, we even looked at New Canaan, where I had come from for 22 years. And we looked at their performance and their targets, and it's still 75, no matter where you are. 75 is the target for all school districts in the state of Connecticut. And the goal is to get there by 2030. And you'll see that we have some students who've already gotten there. And we have some students who haven't, and we'll see the average of all of that too. So that's by 2030 that that happens. So we have a few years, and we're planning on getting there. So I always like to look at the shape of the data, being the math person that I am. And we really had, had seen some progress from 2016 to 20, you know, 17 to 2019. That's when we really kind of, that next year, we earned the blue ribbon for what was Mary Morrison into Thane's River. And you can see that the data from Groton in the blue outperforms the state. We're kind of neck and neck, but we're right there. And you see the dip. Now, remember in 1920 and 2021, there was a year that we all left the school in March and we weren't tested. So there was no test data. The following year, remember, we had hybrid, remote, and then, you know, a combination of the two. So that, that data was taken in all different ways, so they really couldn't count on that as a serious benchmark. So really by 21, 22, we were back in the saddle with assessments. And that was kind of a benchmark. And then we looked to this year. And it's not what we want to see. We want to see it progressing upward, that index. So we really are putting together plans to see that happen for our students. In the ELA, I'm really excited about the science of reading initiative. We're going to be, you know, we're already rolling it out with the University of Florida program. And, you know, for phonics and really looking seriously at how the workshop works for reading and writing. So also integrate those skills into both encoding and decoding. So in early intervention, I think it's really a key area that we really need to start earlier than later. And you'll hear that theme kind of throughout this, especially to get to the kindergarten age. So we do have some things in place, and we're reexamining work in the middle school and even at the high school level with the 612 coordination. So. So just to define, who are students who are considered by the state high needs groups? They have to belong to one or more of these subjects. So it's special education. It's our multi-language learners who actually assess on the loss link from like a one to a four or five, depending on the area. And then economically disadvantaged going by the free and reduced lunch.
Five oh fours included in the high needs or instead?
No. And I don't know if you can move the, oh. Move it maybe to the top or the bottom so that they can see the graphs.
Yes, sir.
So we're looking at high needs and non-high needs. You just saw the average of all students. But we want to look at the difference between the students who are considered high needs and the students who are considered non-high needs, not in any of those groups. And one of the things you may notice is that on the high need side, our students actually outperform the state average. So that's good news, that our high needs kids are doing better than. When you look to the right, and non-high needs are kind of neck and neck, and you see scores that are just at 75, maybe a little higher, maybe a little lower. So those kids have already met that target, you know? So we consider, we want to see them just continue to grow and flourish. They really, when they look for a gap, they look at the difference between the state high needs and the state non-high needs. And what is that percentage number? And when we do the math, it's about 21.2 points. But when we look at Groton Public Schools, those numbers are like 17.6. So we're closer. And so we wouldn't be designated as a school district that had a significant gap because of that. But we do see a gap. So we do, we are mindful of that. And we want to be able to ensure that all of our kids have the skills that they need. We actually use this data in planning for intervention for students. We look at the Sback very closely. Teachers look at it in the, in the school data groups. We examine it as a whole with the district data team. And they actually use these to determine kids who needed different, whether it's tier one, two or three, or special education students who need to focus in on particular areas that they might not have made their growth or their target in. Now, we always compare ourselves to our DIR. And remember, these are alliance districts like ourselves. And I actually want to point to Hampton and Middletown, because they are districts that are a little more like Groton. They have very affluent and, you know, very, you know, and poverty. They have the same kind of size of schools and district. So they are a little more like us than a, let's say, a Plainfield or a Burnham, who are on either side. And the superintendent and Vernon and I are good colleagues and friends. And we've actually said we're going to plan a visit. He's going to come to our district with the team, and I'm going to bring a team to his district because we're going to share some of the things that we've done and kind of collaborate together. We often are neck and neck with Vernon. Sometimes last year, we were ahead of Vernon. This year, they're a little ahead of us. So we do have similarities.
So.
Yes, this is just last spring. And the data actually was out, like as we were finishing up the test. It was really soon this year, but it was embargoed. So this is, you know, the gradual release. So we're receiving data kind of throughout the time period. And then I always say blue is for, you know, literacy for books. And you see, I notice also a trend that Ledger, Groton and Mottville are very close to one another. In all of these charts, we're really very similar with our performance. So that's other colleagues that we work closely with. But also, I, I would say my neighboring region, those are the superintendents that are with me doing, you know, curriculum work, doing legislative work. And so we are constantly sharing ideas back and forth. And I think that's important, collaboration. With math, I say think green for money and math. And we got it color coded. But you see, again, Groton is, you know, very close to the state, outperforming it just by a very little bit, not really significant. And the shape of the data was it kind of went up in 2019, and then it, you know, sloped down after COVID. But we're hoping to see it go up much more and kids performing even better. And again, just looking at high needs versus non-high needs. This was kind of interesting to me that, again, we see our high needs kids outperforming state performance. But on non-high needs, we see, you know, close, but not quite meeting what the state average was. So that's what we pay attention to and make sure that, you know, all kids are thriving in our district. Whether they're high needs or non-high needs. But again, you see high needs are closer to the non-high needs than the state non-high needs and high needs. So there's no registered gap, but we do see a gap. And then looking at our alliance districts and our DIR district reference group, we see that, again, you know, we still are one of the top performers with Vernon. But again, looking at rare Hampton and Middletown, you know, kind of place, that they are districts that are really very similar to Groton. And then our neighbors, again, you see the three of us stuck in a row, Groton, Ledger and Mottville. But you see, to the left is Norwich, New London. And to the right, you see, you know, districts like Preston, Waterford, Stonington and North Stonington.
Is it still state designation that New London, Norwich and Groton are both considered, are the three in this area that considered distressed communities?
I know that that was a label that was placed on them a while ago. I don't know if for certain they considered that, but it's something we should look at. I know when children first, Groton first came to be, that was, you know, with the Dalio, not Dalio, the, who was the? Groussen, Groussen Foundation, that was really supported, that early childhood initiative, because we were considered distressed. But again, in math, we see the Groton, Ledger, Mottville, and then you see the others. And now the Next Generation Science Standards index, we see a similar trend. We see that in 1819, you see our performance, you know, 63 point, no, I'm sorry, that was the state 60. Read it, 65.4. And then now it's currently at 61.5. So we still took it, they're a little slightly better than last year, but not significantly. And kind of neck and neck with the state. And then, again, we're looking at high needs versus non-high needs. And our high needs outperform the state, and our non-high needs didn't. So even though we talk about intervention and all this work being done for kids to get them, you know, and, you know, get them to do better, every child has kind of a target that they are working towards. So whether they're children who maybe identify gifted and are really top performers, still have areas to grow. Whether they are special needs kids and they have maybe even more, more metro, they also have a target. So we're really paying attention to all of our students. And Killingley, look at Killingley. So Killingley is an interesting district as well. We've actually had several Killingley teachers and principals join us in our district. And they've done some really interesting work in all areas. So that's something to be said. And I think it's, it's interesting to find out what are some of these other districts doing? So the networking and collaborating is really pretty essential. And then there we go at looking at by the region. And, you know, again, Groton, Mottville and Ledger kind of in the middle there. And, you know, the, looking at the other districts to see what's happening. But remember the socioeconomic differences of alliance districts, like ours is 51% free and reduced lunch. Um and, you know, we really look at that in twenty percent, I think, special education at this point, right Denise? So you, you know, you look at these different populations and, you know, look at these needs and you, you kind of see why we were named an Alliance district, so. But no excuses because we are, we've got some plans in the making and um exciting plans. So um chronic absenteeism is another area of concern. Last year I told you that we were expecting it to be somewhat better, but we knew that there were still a lot of bills. Not only was there COVID, there was RSV, there was the flu, there was probably other bugs that we had kind of stayed away from because of, you know. Kind of quarantining and wearing masks and so we saw it in our student population and we saw it in our teacher population. That there was absenteeism because of a lot of illness, so um we recognize that. And chronic absenteeism, the formula is ten percent or greater, it's just that you've missed school. So in a hundred and eighty day school year, eighteen days is chronic and we measure it each month. So looking at the number of days in the month and the number of days missed, um you know, gives you the ratio of chronic absenteeism. But it really comes out at the end of the year, but we do keep track of it all year long. And that's, you look at the shape of this data and you can see now upward mobility is not good for chronic absenteeism. We don't want more of it, we want less of it. So when that hill hit in the middle of COVID, you can see how it impacted our population. And this is really about the students, but we do look at the teacher population and staff population as well. And then you can see that it's steadily declining and hopefully the target for this is five percent. Chronic absenteeism, only five percent, so we have a ways to go.
That last data.
Right, not sure why. And then this is interesting, we had a couple of excited principals. Kristoffin Ays as CK was really thrilled and we talked a little bit about why she thought that was going downward trend. You know, from her thirty-one point six percent to seventeen point one. Charles Barnum also down to fifteen point six, Northeast was doing pretty well even last year, but they're doing really well. And so they may be the first to hit that five percent. So we talked about ways to ensure that kids were coming to school when they were well. We don't want them to go to school when they're ill, we want them to come to school when they're well. And so using our community coordinators that are at each building to outreach, using our teams of, you know, who really monitor absenteeism. On kind of a daily, weekly basis and then make outreach to families. We've had principals and social workers um. Reach out and go to homes to just check on families and support them in getting kids back to school. So, you know, a lot of work is done in this area and of course the state has named us showing up together, so. When I did my convocation, I said, we're going to get better together and we're going to show up together, all of us, so. That's the mission for this year because I think that when we're all back, kids have a better chance of learning, so. And here are some of the district-wide plans. When the principals come to you, they'll get more specific and tell you some of their specific plans. I'm sorry, did you want to add something, Doctor?
Yeah.
So that's why we have a school, um you know, data um team and they really look at that to the, you know, they know their population, they know their kids. And then when they come up here, the district data team, and I think we have one coming up in a couple of weeks. And we'll look at it, so they'll share their insight because they're so close to the situation with the district and then we can look at it more globally. And then I can share that with you.
So I just want to, um Liz, um one of our board of ed members just stated, could hear you, William. So let me see if I can um put a synopsis to what you um asked is, do we have a sense about what, what is the data? Um in implying for us about what, what is, what are we to understand for the data about the absenteeism? Is it, is there something happening within the community? Is it really illness? Is it how kids are getting to school or not getting to school? What is, what is the issue? And so Liz, I, I, I believe I, I caught that. Did I do that okay, William?
Yeah, basically it's the illness ones, the part of illness ones, that, that. I want to know, you know, where are opportunities to support the members of the community and make sure that they can get to school now? So that's what I want to see outside of truly illness-related absenteeism. What are the other things, you know, barriers for students to get to school and how we.
That's great. Dean.
Third reason, I don't know how many teams fall into this category, and that is they're not set, there are no barriers, they're just not coming. They're not, they're not coming and now they're shutting them off. And we don't have true adults, you can probably know, so.
But these teams do work on that, Dean, that's really the population that, um especially during COVID was the one that was, we really did the outreach. So it might be a teacher that's a champion for the kid, it might be a social worker, it might be the counselor. Um might be the assistant principal or the principal, so kind of a team goes out to the home to see if they can't support getting the student back. Denise wears the hat of pupil services, so she's been known to actually outreach along with the, you know, special ed.
We do a lot of home visits and supporting families with community agencies that can support the whole family. Because oftentimes parents need support, they really don't know what to do.
I'd be curious to know, unfortunately, she's working around sick and that could be. Certain uh kids who have barriers or kids who. For the misleadings flat out, there was no reason except they're not coming.
We also offer alternative programs.
Please share your voice for that.
We also offer alternative programs for students who maybe aren't successful in a traditional high school program. So we have our online Apex Academy, we have our Self-Office Academy, we have an alternative new beginnings program. So we look at a lot of those different options too in terms of what would be the best fit for this student to get them back on track. Maybe gradually with a, with a modified or alternative schedule.
Uh, I'm sorry, so again, no answer tonight, I'm sure the block middle school was absenteeism. What is this point? So how much of that is illness, how much of that is barriers, how much of that is just literal, flat out?
I, I rec, I'm going to recognize you, you was not finished with the sentence yet, so I got, I got. Um so I'm going to do Catherine and then I'm going to recognize Rita.
Oh yes, so I just wanted to add that um talking about this, I think that a large, also a good. Uh percent of this absence is due with mental health. I think that um especially in the high school population, a lot of um. Uh children, a lot of teenagers suffer from mental health that they're not getting proper resources for. And I think that is a, that's a huge concern, not only for like students, but also for um of the higher up administrators. Because it's not just like people not coming to school because they don't want to, it's people, it's like mental health creating. Uh uh environment for them at home and also for them at school that makes it that they can't come to school. They like, both like mentally and like physically can't come to school. Um yes, it's like, it's a, it's for people who suffer from uh chronic depression and even students suffer from anxiety. It is a lot of work and mental energy to just get up out of bed. So I feel like that is also, there have been like, I've heard um my friends coming to be like, I just can't do it today. Or um students who have been uh missing for like weeks due to their mental health. So I feel that that is also what, talking about this, that is the business to be addressed.
Thank you. And I totally support what you're saying, um excuse me, that was quite mint. I guess that is another lesson that I learned, one, check where you're supposed to be. And two, don't eat a thin mint while you're trying to leave a meat. Lessons to learn by Rita.
Um I'll wait till you put down the screen, it's, it's hard to talk to. Um so whenever they're done, I'll ask my questions.
Please.
Oh, okay, perfect, all right. I have a few questions. My first is. To Susan, is the district administering flu shots to staff this year and are students able to obtain them at the health clinic?
We have to check that the VNA.
Yeah, go ahead. Denise is also wears that hat too, the health hat.
For the past several years, the VNA has not run the flu clinics in our schools because they've been short-staffed. So this is about the time that we reach out to them to see if they'll be able to run it again this year. Um so I will get back to you on that.
Okay, I always thought in the past, I remember the school nurses gave the flu shots for their staff at each school.
They, we did, when they had the staff for it, you're right, we do miss that.
The staff is this, is a, is this, is the school nurse, she's there.
Yeah, she is, but they're uh, the, the health office has been very busy um since COVID. The, as Susan indicated earlier, the tripe endemic that we had last year with RSV, the flu and COVID.
So we'll be calling that and asking that question.
That's my whole question is, you know, we're having so much absenteeism due to illness. We should do as a district all we can to help the staff and students not get sick. And I also wanted to know, I know this might be to William, um are any COVID vaccine clinics scheduled this year? At the schools?
So Dr. Horgan was very helpful because we had numerous, between that and Griffin Hospital, we had numerous COVID. Um, you know, vaccination centers at every school at that time. I have not heard that that's going to be an option, but I can certainly check with Ledger Light Health and check to see.
Okay, and I have two more quick questions. What happens to our district if by twenty thirty? We don't meet the first performance goal of seventy-five percent and also the chronic absenteeism goal?
First of all, it's not seventy-five percent, it's a target of seventy-five.
Target.
It's a target of seventy-five, not a percentage. And I'm not sure what would happen. I'm assuming that, you know, I'm thinking that we're all going to work towards that goal. Um but, you know, I don't know if, if they will plan to give extra support to those who don't reach it. That has not been determined.
I just was ma, wondering, I mean, I wouldn't want to have any financial impact, a negative financial impact from the state.
Nor would I, I agree, yeah. I mean, we're going to a Performance Matters workshop. Um that's scheduled next week, so it's something we can ask. Lauren's going to be attending.
Great, thank you.
So we, your one question did not get answered, which is about can students access the mental health clinics within the school? I don't think that we got any answers to that.
I, no, I said that was for the flu shots. I know they can um access the mental health. It was about whether they could have flu shots at the clinics.
Sorry, I misunderstood. You just wanted to make sure you had your questions answered.
Thank you.
And absolutely, any further questions before we wrap this up? Matthew?
First of all, I'd like to thank Denise for breaking out the high needs versus the non-high needs.
That was Lauren.
Lauren, excuse me for having missed.
I give Lauren credit for that.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Lauren. Uh I want to. Perhaps we can address this at the next time. I understand that this is an index, understand. What I don't understand is the, what I said last year. This doesn't tell me how many of our students are reaching the grade level expectations. So is there some way that you could, not asking for an exact handshake, but is there some way we can see that when we have whatever the number is? What does that mean in real terms, in terms of reading um performance numbers? Of what?
I, I was just going to say, I know Susan and Lauren and Phil had another slide with the district plans. And I believe in there there was a universal screening goal.
But I also want to say that that's what we're going to come back to you with disaggregated. Yep, yep, you absolutely, you're going to see the middle school and the high school results um by grade level, disaggregated. So they'll get kind of knee-deep with that and then really talk about their specific action plans.
And then second, second piece?
No, not at all.
The second piece is we have four schools that are above twenty percent, well, Thames River is nineteen point four. But those four schools are elevated ones, so I'm looking forward to our next meeting when we have specific action plans for those four schools. This Northeast Academy doesn't worry, we're going to just find ourselves some.
So they will address the um absenteeism as well as the S back in the NGSS. Um and they're also going to talk a little bit about what their action plan is in the culture and climate, and I'm still working on that for you. We just had to, um there were some identifiable information that we had to take out, but we're working on that to get that to the board. For climate and culture.
Thank you very much.
So if you want to put up that last slide. So it's our, our data team looking seriously at the data, trying to set goals. Both the data teams in the schools and out of the schools and the curriculum instruction committee that's going to actually work on the strategic plan for the next few years. Um and we really will be examining all this data through the lens of identifying the strengths. And looking at the needs improvement for our district, both at the district level and at the school levels. Um and creating action steps, like what are real targeted action steps that we can take to support, you know, those identified needs improvements? Um and then using collected data to make decisions about instruction. We are also, the state is also um showcasing or are asking us to pick a universal screener. And we're using a Dibbles eight product, which we've used in the past, but now we have this um really great Amplify product that is online. And it gives us charts and data and gives us a lot of solid information. So we'll be using that really K through five, um four and five more for intervention. But we're, um Denise just met with the middle school and um they're going to also be using a Dibbles product. So for special ed and intervention, so we're really excited about having these universal screeners for everybody. And also monitoring progress throughout the year, so that will be happening. Um and then looking at that absenteeism and finding out why is it happening? Illness, we understand, but for those other reasons, we need to understand and we need to make kids comfortable and feel that sense of belonging and want to be back in school. And sometimes that is a gradual process to, sometimes we need to get to the kids first and then bring them in. In kind of a least restricted environment. Um and then of course strengthening and aligning this multi-tiered system of support, K through twelve. And that's a project that we have been really working on, we're, we're finding out what every school does. And while it's a, a very similar process, now that we have universal screeners for all kids and for all schools. And we have um a curriculum that is designed, um redesigned, K through three with the science of reading. Um you know, we do have some systems in place to make it more cohesive and to make it more aligned in our schools. So we'll continue that work and we'll train the staff to use these new tools, these new assessment tools. And um we'll, you know, choose research-based intervention practices and best practices for kids. And those are differentiated too, depending on the child and their needs and using the data to drive what we're doing in the classroom. So that's so important that we're not just guessing, you know. So that's so important that we're not just guessing, you know, that we're very strategic about it. So um, the data didn't thrill me, to be very honest with you. I was a little disappointed. But I do know that the things that we're putting into place now are going to make a difference and that's what I'm excited about. Any other questions about this before we move on to the kindergarten? All right, so let's move on. Now, Nadine Mathlin sits at the table with Children First Broughton.
Thank you, Catherine.
Catherine, it was good to see you.
Thank you.
So Nadine Mathlin sits at the table with Children First Broughton and works with all of our preschool, pre-A TK teachers in early childhood. Um.
So if in um so TK means transitional kindergarten. And so my understanding is that we that we developed the kindergarten, the transitional kindergarten was because our kindergarten teachers were noting that we had lots of, we had lots of children that were age appropriate for a kindergarten experience, but was not um, but were lacking some of the skills. And so we developed this sort of transitional program where kids could come, they would, um, all kids could screen. My understanding is for kindergarten and then possibility if they met this screening. Um, they could go, they could have the option to go into a transitional kindergarten class. And we have how many in the district?
One.
One. One TK at Thames River.
So it was really because Connecticut is the only state in the Union that allowed four-year-olds to come to kindergarten. And they didn't have to turn five until January first of the following year, the only state in the Union. And our teachers were saying that with the Common Core standards or the Connecticut Core standards in for five-year-olds, that a lot of our four-year-olds who were born between that September date and December, especially December and end December, was a real struggle and some families didn't feel like they could send their kids. They didn't feel they were really ready. And we wanted to have a program that was done designed especially for them, using a Brigance assessment um of early childhood to really figure out, you know, um how we could service them that. So we have pre-K for four-year-olds who are going into kindergarten. And then we had this TK because the eligibility was that they could go to kindergarten, but they just weren't ready. And I've actually had some teachers, I had preschool teachers, pre-K teachers, kindergarten teachers. We had quite the team, didn't we, Nadine, to create this thing?
Yeah.
And so um.
I I just was um, we I I think that many of us are on the table and they know about what TK is because we are um part of the watching the.
Again, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew. So Nadine, I'm sorry, I didn't need to stop you.
Oh, no, that's okay. I gave you some time to get uh my slideshow started, so.
And you did.
So um, so yeah, so there was new legislation passed over this summer, um changing the entry date for our kindergarten students. So beginning next year in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, children who need to be five years old either on or before September first in order to automatically be entered into kindergarten or be eligible for kindergarten. And as Susan said, this is a change from what we've done in the past where the kindergarten cutoff date was the first of January.
The following year.
Right, the following year. So this is a major, major change. We are one of the last states to actually get on board with this change. Um, and there's just a lot of research and just just information out there that supports um this new legislation. Our teachers are, you know, all on board with it and they are very excited. Um, we know it's going to be a huge shift for parents, especially who may not be aware of this. So this is why we're beginning our work together to, you know, get a plan in place. So what the state has told us is that um if a child does not meet the new entry cutoff date, um he or she um may still be admitted into kindergarten with two um caveats. So number one, the parent will need to write a request asking that their child be entered into kindergarten early or have early entrance into kindergarten. And number two, uh Brown Public Schools uh will have to uh complete an assessment to determine if the child is in fact ready for kindergarten. So the state has put the responsibility on the school districts to develop a plan to create an assessment to make this determination. The state has not um given us any guidelines to date. I don't know if they're they're doing it right now. I'm not too sure. But um it's really on us right now to develop the system.
And fortunately for us, this team that had developed the TK also were instrumental in redesigning our kindergarten entry screening process. And so we screened students in the spring and we screened them again in the summer. And then we have a day, I think that we can screen them right before school starts. So we've already really gathered a lot of good resources to determine and we have years of data that really have supportive, you know, readiness for kindergarten.
Yes. So thankfully, we've already started started the work. So we do have um, you know, at least a start to our game plan. But we definitely are going to have some follow-up meetings to really fine tune things. Um additionally, the state has told us that if a child is receiving any special education services in preschool and does not meet the new entry cutoff date, um the child's P P T or Planning and Placement Team can review and revise the child's I E P or individualized education plan to meet the needs of the child during that additional year of preschool. Because essentially, if the child's birthday is between September and December, they will not be eligible for kindergarten. Um, so we would need to plan for additional additional year of preschool and also the special education services. Um, but there is a caveat. Parents may submit a written request, as they did before, for their child to be admitted into kindergarten if they do not meet the new entry cutoff date of September first. Um, and we will follow the same process. We could be completing an assessment and determining if the child is developmentally appropriate for kindergarten. So I just wanted to put.
To ask for clarification?
Yep.
So but this is, this is for kiddos that haven't acted I E P because they're they're free and receiving some type of services from our school district. So what this says is that we would already be meeting the I E P goals because they would be receiving the speech or O T or P T or what have you. But now um the state is telling us that a parent can request if if they don't need to age cutoff to not only receive uh an hour speech or whatever, that they could be in the kindergarten class. Is that what I'm saying?
What it's basically saying is you can't discriminate against a child who has special needs. So they have the same opportunity as their typical peers to write a letter.
Okay.
Requesting that they be admitted to kindergarten and early and be assessed as well as, you know, with the same procedures as everyone else. So what they're doing is they're just reiterating to districts that that caveat that Nadine explained in the first slide applies to students with I E Ps as well because we can't treat them differently.
Done. Oh, that's it. I'm sorry.
So we have child Barbara who will be determined through the Brigance or whatever the street name is, is not developmentally appropriate. What happens?
So that is a part of the work that we um began to discuss and plan for. We really want, they're very sensitive to the fact that this is a huge shift and it's going to disrupt the plans of a lot of parents as it relates to the expectation of their child's coming to school for a full day. So that is definitely something that we're considering as it relates to.
It's a working project.
It is.
Yeah, we're playing to the seat because we know that early childhood intervention is most critical. And if there were ever a time that we could do something more for our littles, it would be this coming up here. Because there are going to be a whole population, about a third of the kids, who will not be eligible. So you'll have these extra kindergarten teachers who could take on, you know, either whether we call it transition pay or pre-K for that population. We could actually do something pretty exciting.
Personally look forward to hearing you come back at some point with sharing what you're going to do.
So the current platform is for pre-K is half-day. I mean, because national data for children that are early is often driven by care of children.
That's right.
Being as a kid, we watch. So we're developing an option for these to be able to go to full day at school.
Yeah, we're looking at full day as well. So let's.
That would be taken care of. That would make a much.
Let let's finish the the current. Um, but I also think, Nadine, it might be really good for um the board to also understand the Gotten's um collaboration with the Children's First um and uh speaking fiduciary. Because that might also um help us, um yeah, also might help us understand. I lost my train of thought. I think you know what I meant, though. Geez.
Yeah, so um Broughton Public Schools, we are in partnership with Children's First Broughton and we are the fiduciary for the School Readiness Grant. So um we currently have the Thames River Fund and Early Child Development Center. They are the recipients of the School Readiness um monies this year. Um, and they um educate our students from our districts. And so those students are afforded a full day's worth of programming. They're NIAC accredited. So it's not just a daycare quote unquote. They are learning. Um, so that is definitely something that we're in partnership, you know, with the community and we definitely have very strong ties with them. So.
How many seats is that?
So I believe we have fifty-eight total.
So fifty-eight of our students get taken care of through that grant that comes to Broughton. It comes through us and we just, you know, give it over to these centers then, you know, educate our kids.
And so um it's in our later slide, but we are actually collaborating with Children's First Broughton because they, you know, they educate a lot of children in our community and just rent um childcare facilities. So we really want to make sure that all stakeholders are involved in the conversation and are very well informed in terms of what it is that we're planning so that they can communicate this to the families that they um are responsible for. So this is just our current conviction, just to give the board a just a picture, a snapshot of our current programming. So at Thames River, we currently have four kindergarten classrooms. Thames River is where our transitional kindergarten is housed. We have one classroom. We also have one pre-kindergarten classroom and three integrated preschool classrooms at Thames River. At Mystic River, we have four kindergarten classrooms, one pre-kindergarten, three integrated preschool classrooms and one something's in preschool.
You might want to talk about integrated.
Sure.
Classroom.
So our integrated preschool classroom, uh that is um similar, half-day programs. And it's the age range is from three to five-year-olds. Um, and we have a, it's a split model. So half the students that are in the classroom are students who are model peers. And the other half are students with developmental delays who receive special education services. Um, and so we have up to about sixteen students per class in our integrated preschool classroom. And for our pre-K classroom, those are students who are going to be ready for, we're getting them ready for kindergarten. So next year, you know, they would have been age eligible for kindergarten, depending on where their birthday plans. Um, but it's more of a readiness program. Um, and we have eighteen students in each of those classes. So up to thirty-six total.
But they're half-day programs, to your point. But this may give us an opportunity to do something.
Would I be, would I be correct, Susan, in inferring that uh with this change, we might have to consider adding another another class to transitional?
Yes, that's one of the things.
That's why we're talking about it now. So that as we begin to think about the budget process in January, we are holding, what does that mean for space? What does that mean for staffing? Um, and and such. So um, this is just to kind of whet our our wheel around how do we move forward with this information in terms of budgetary process? And also not just this year. Sorry, Nadine.
Oh, no.
This is not just for um this year. This is actually for years to come. Because I think next year is going to be a transitional year for us to get that. But also, how are we going to do early childhood in in Broughton? And what is that going to look like and what do we and what do we have? And, you know, um, how do we work with the other stakeholders in the community? How do we work with our partnerships um and such? So Nadine, I'm promise I'm going to be.
No, this is great. Thank you. Um, Carl Barnum has three kindergarten classrooms, there will be test four and Catherine has four kindergarten classrooms. So we just wanted to paint the picture in terms of um what we currently have in the district.
And this year we have three hundred ninety-nine kindergartens. And we have about thirty who go to the out of district magnets and then the rest are ours. So it's quite a large group.
Are you seeing a trend in numbers? Would we expect all things being equal? Fewer, more, or or the same number of kindergarten students next year? What's the cohort that's coming up? Do you have any idea?
I think you would have to take a look at census data. I mean, that's how we know that.
Yeah.
Yeah. But for next year, because the age difference, it's a third of our kids won't be eligible. And so that could be as many as four F T Es of kindergarten teachers that wouldn't have a classroom unless we gave them a pre-K classroom or a TK classroom. In which building. So we'll have the space and we'll have the staff, but then what's to come? So we're already starting to look for grants and opportunities around universal pre-K.
And and we're already um going out to meetings with our regional partners to talk to other districts about how are they approaching this? Nadine and I are going to East Con on October sixteenth for a regional um meeting with our partners about. Maybe we'll get some ideas from other districts in terms of what they're doing.
In terms of assessment, what?
Yeah.
How you're determining whether the kids are eligible? What kind of, what what kind of stance could parents take if you say your child was not eligible?
Hey, great question. So I believe parents can, you know, the decision. So that's all going to be a part of our process as well in terms of like that next step.
I do feel if we have something that's developmentally appropriate for our children, um so they don't have to feel rushed into kindergarten as a place to go if they have to work, that they'll be very grateful. I know that our TK parents are very truly grateful that there is something here in Broughton and other people have come to visit it. But there aren't, I don't even know if there's another district in our state that has what we have. But so, you know.
Stay tuned.
Yeah.
William.
Yeah, I think just expanding that, uh, appreciate problems. Two, we can recognize what that student needs. We can follow that course to that student to be successful moving forward.
I couldn't agree more.
So um so currently, um I just, again, just reflecting the current configuration. So for kindergarten students, um, you know, students who are five on or before January first are eligible for kindergarten. And for our TK program this year, um students who are turning five between September second and January first are students who typically are placed in our TK and that is also um after consideration of the Brigance screener. So next year, students will be eligible for kindergarten as they were our students who are five on or before September first. And in terms of our thinking for next year with TK and the possible expansion of it, we would be looking at students who would be eligible um if they're turning five between September second and January first. So after that, we.
We don't know if we'll call it TK or pre-K or name it something new, but just a place for those young children to come would be really ideal.
So we just wanted to inform the board of what we've been up to and what we plan on doing. So we had our first kindergarten collaborative conversation on September eighteenth. Um, we had staff members from Early Childhood Meet along with myself and Susan just to begin brainstorming ideas. And we want to continue holding those um meetings regularly and involve more stakeholders. Um, members of the board are very welcome to attend as well. Um, and we want to really develop a a nice plan to communicate with the community, especially our parents, so that they are fully aware of what we would like to roll out. Um, and that would of course include the assessment process and, you know, what are renaming of whether it's TK, pre-K or what have you. Um, and of course, sharing that with the board. And our hope is to get this done no later than January two, twenty twenty-four. Earlier, that would be a bonus.
And and my guess is that we need to start doing the communication to families now. Um, because a lot of, a lot of people will be thinking, oh, it's okay, because my kids can go to school in September and they might not have that. So.
Nadine and I were in Stanford together and we just happened to both. Nadine and I were in Stanford together and we just happened to both to Brighton. Um, but she's actually zoomed in with one of their workshops for teachers. So they've already kind of rolled out a plan. And so I think the sooner we can identify the plan, the better it is. But we have to really pay attention to a lot of details, like what is it going to cost us and can we sustain it?
Want to be clear, what's the state allotting to us?
Nothing, an unfunded mandate.
So without tongue, tongue in. She, dark. Um, I do want to let you know that our liaison meeting that we have with the Board of Ed, with the Town Council, the RTM and the City Council. Uh, we have asked, um, Susan and I have asked that our state reps come and join this liaison meeting. So that they can begin to hear some of this unfunded mandates that are coming down to us. I, I, I think going to providing early childhood, um, education is really important for this town. However, um, we need some supports to be able to do that or what does that look like? And all the other unfunded mandates that are, that are, we're, we'll get punished if we don't do it. Um, and so I just wanted to let you know that, um, in two weeks, not next week, but the week afterwards, we're going to have that liaison. Yep, we're going to have that meeting and I've encouraged the, our other colleagues, um, from the other to also, um, be prepared and be ready. To kind of talk about what some of their concerns about their mandates. Um, so that is great. Any further questions about, um, our early childhood programming? Okay, great, um, thank you guys, I think.
Kim, I just had one thing on the focus group task. If they could look at the third bullet, um, and, and correct the, rather than turning its turn.
Thank you.
The last page.
You're welcome.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright.
That was the page out of Andrea's. There she goes, be careful now. Alright, so thank you very much for you guys coming. Um, and Nadine, it was good to, it was good to see you and see you and why. Um, and so, um, I, I don't know if, if.
Yeah, Dr. Piazza, you have an early morning, so since you're the building principal and the assistant superintendent, head home, you've got to drive. We, we'll, we'll take it from here.
You're the boss.
But not bossy.
Alright, so we're moving on to the Director of Finance. Um, and. I don't know if you want to kind of walk us through. It gets cold. Yes.
Thighs all a little bit.
So the six layers that I have on. It's no indication. You guys, for those of, for those who are on Zoom, it is actually as always cold in this room and it is cold. Um, but I am going to turn it over to the Director of Finance. Um, and if you want to kind of walk us through what you're thinking about, um, presenting your first object summary for the board.
Yeah, so there's, there's actually two documents, you should have the object summary and a sort of a one-month view of our health insurance. I think you've seen that one before, so I don't want to, I don't want to go through something you've already seen, but just early thoughts. Um, if I look at the object summary after my first week or so, just from a trend perspective. Um, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, it says we've essentially. Have forty-two percent left of our remaining balance. Last year at this time, we had forty-one percent, so fairly similar. The month of September, which is, this is just about a month.
But it includes all that encumbrance.
Includes encumbrance as well, but we, yeah, we encumbered and/or spent about five million dollars in the month. Almost like the exact same number as last year. So it seems like from a trend and an operating perspective, we're, we're moving down the same path as we did, at least early in the school year. There's three or four numbers on this page that I've, I like to bring to the Finance Committee next week. And the reason I like to start there is because some of the information, similar to the healthcare, we, we just don't have updated information from the last time we've seen it. So I have a conference call next week, early next week with MDG. We should have updated September numbers, um, for some of their information, gives me a chance to, to dive in a little bit deeper. As well as some of the other number on this page. But the, the first three that I really want to talk about and bring back almost every month to you, which you're more than familiar with. The first is health insurance. It's, it's a big number, it's one of these items that's really behavior-based. We don't have a whole lot of control about it. But given medical trend just in the industry, I think it's one that we should keep our eye on. So I'll come back, I already have four or five years worth of data kind of working through this to understand our population, but I'd like to share that with the Finance Committee. Get some feedback from them and then maybe bring that back every month for the board. The second piece is sort of a, uh, combination is what I, what I'll call it, sort of all the utilities. It's the electricity, the gas, the oil, some things that are really sort of rate and utilization based. I think for us, especially with, we've got a combination of new and old buildings, it'd be prudent just to kind of keep an eye on. And it's not one that we can kind of make a decision on tomorrow and change the trajectory of that. We're not going to turn all the lights, we're not going to stop the oil, so it's one of these things that's a little more environmentally based, that I like to. Piece together some information, share with the Finance Committee, make sure it's the right information that you'd like to see every single month and then bring that back to the board. But if you look at those two, it's a number of different lines here, but if you look at that aggregate. There's sort of the least amount of percentages of, of money that we have left to spend. So let's use healthcare, just as one example. You know, we're, our remaining balance is five point eight million, it's already eighty-four percent. Versus some of the other categories you see, we're already up in the nineties, high nineties. Some water and sewers already down to eighty-one percent. Electricity's at eighty percent. So even though the schools weren't open in July and August primarily, you know, we're, we're clipping at a pretty good rate at some of these categories. So I just need a little time to get some up, up, updated information, bring it back to you, get some feedback from the Finance Committee.
Wow, thank you.
Absolutely. I read in today's, uh. Balance, we're projecting oil costs to go up to a hundred dollars a barrel this winter. And a hundred and fifty thousand. Believe them or not, but, um. Going to come up with a what-if scenario, something?
Yes. And I, and I think our oil cost for this year, I understand that the contract is in our favor. Um, I don't know what that looks like for future years, so we should play around with some sensitivity analysis on that.
The second question I have, uh, has to do with, uh. Activity busing, there is a category that can find it somewhere, student activity, it's a twenty-eight transportation line, twenty-eight. Uh, where we have eighty-one percent, uh, um, unencumbered or extended. And I have a concern, if this is the wrong time, cut me off, because it has to do. Uh, I attended a meeting, I thought, GOSA, it's a Gotten Healthcare Space Association. And they were just talking about the wonderful experience that we've gotten this past year, that leading kids. Maybe their plan was to expand this, to, to expand their offerings. And that they learned that the, um, new contract with the bus company is not including use of the buses during, like, the bus hours, that's outside the contract.
So some of the information is correct and not correct, so, um, I mean, my understanding. Yeah, so that actually isn't a bad question to either refer it to the Finance Committee to kind of take a look at what that means. Or to put it to the committee of the whole when we have a financing facilities. And have Susan and they come back and kind of talk about what is the, what is the student activity.
They, they did say one thing, if you knew they kept my mouth shut, we got it too instantly. They said they were, they had a plan, doing, not was have parents drive all the students, um, to their walks. And I, and my eyes rolled and suddenly hit into, and I got fixed insurance consequences of that.
They've even talked about a Saturday hike for each of the schools and getting families and that could be something that we could transport families, so there are some ideas.
So that's a, let's, um, let's stay with the object code. Um, but Matthew, I'm assuming that, um, you want agenda item to the next committee of the hall where we talk about finance. Is about field trips and how, and how there are plans around that.
I think that would be.
You got it.
I'm sure.
It can be a commutable with the finance. Right. I just have to write so I can understand what I'm writing. Ms. Joan, do you have that so that if I lose my mind, you've got it?
No, I'm sorry, I do not.
I got it. Okay, so it's, um, Matthew's going to be adding an agenda item to our committee of the whole. Where we talk about financing facilities, about looking at field trips, costs and ways that we can kind of, um, work around that. Not work around that, but just to understand it. So I did get it. Alright. Any other questions about our object code? And our, our, um, insurance? So you want to speak to that or did you, or did you kind of already kind of lumped that both in?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to glaze over it, but I, my understanding is, um, this is from July. So it was brought to the, the last month, so I think you've seen this.
Okay.
I was just trying not to spend any additional time on, no news really.
What, you don't want to spend time with us? Any other, any questions of a report that we've already looked at? Alright, super, let's move on to. Mr. Kilpatrick, unless we don't want to, we can just wait until the end of the meeting.
Been done before.
No.
How you doing, sir?
So, I, I'm doing well, thank you.
I'm doing great.
Good, so like, uh, I, I like others, I read the agenda yesterday when I got it. Be very careful, so I've been sitting here since quarter of six, I can't do better. So my notes were written yesterday, I'll have to change today to today or yesterday. So, um, yeah, so I, I record on, um, some things that have happened. You may have heard that, uh, in the last, uh, just a little over a month, we've had three different floods in our buildings. Uh, all three, uh, different causes, different, different results. Similar results but different. Uh, so, um, at Fitch High School, um, after a very heavy rain, we had, uh, a flood in the lower level of new section, eleven hundred. And so we got dealt for, you know, the mediation company here, uh, kind of with fashion and they got it back together within a couple of weeks. Longer than we hoped, but, uh, so kids returned to their classrooms as of yesterday. Still investigating the cause of that, we saw the results of it, so we have not really been informed or we continue to look at that daily. Also at Fitch High School, um, the LED lighting project is underway. Hurt on the upper floor, the way. Met a day, I believe they were on the second floor, starting tonight, worked the way down. Academic, and then the school may move, um, onto the other area of the high school, so once you continue. And the third thing at Fitch High School is we have ordered an elevator, outdoor elevator. With field house, we have a coach, who is wheelchair. So we're going to make the level of field house accessible to him. That will be the other day. We'll be installing that as soon as that gets through. Uh, on to Mystic River School, which is the other school that had two floods, right? One flood after, maybe, I remember back in August, it was a weekend when we had. Three or four very heavy rains down throughout the weekend. One day when you came. Had a lot of water damage. Area where the early childhood kids come. Sort of affected a couple of classrooms, uh, started on the second floor, came back. What had nothing to do with all the rain that we had that weekend, it was actually a, uh, water fountain. Off of that first. Again, that was, uh, mediated. The only thing we're waiting for there, that probably is some code base to, to put back. Because we have ordered code base, the platform, the rubber trees that goes along the wall. So, I was back with. Of course, the, we've had a backup the other day when somebody flushed something, shouldn't have flushed. This is a rate, so flooding will react around the administration area and yours is. I think we need to do some mediation to try that out as quickly as possible to look at it. So they run site, uh, quickly. Our guys got down there first in the morning, with many back into the positive, filled itself with all this water. Quite as much we're in the present, just. As of yesterday morning, all the equipment was taken out of, out of the building, with light. Reading to a. You've been from, and that project will lead to the code base. Brighton Middle School, Brighton Middle School, I don't know if you've been by there lately, but in Pergola. Calling out to a classroom, the Pergola has, um, been, um. It's about, I, I'd say as of today, it was about ninety-eight percent complete. So, actually, it's going well, should be, I, I would expect it to be completely complete. We're out there in the rain this morning. And of course, uh, you may also have seen on the roof of the middle school, the solar project has started there. There are actually panels on the roof already in place. The material delivered to Mystic River School, yes, they have, for that project to start soon.
So if we could just, we'll just stay with that, so Nadine have a question around facilities?
So, we're meeting. On further investigation, we found that. Really high water pressure in that building. Moving to lower the water pressure there. So we've ordered parts to install. We don't hold for that, but that's probably, but ninety-two hundred pounds of water pressure was, a lot of water pressure. Plastic container with a tank inside of that, it could have caused.
And there were two, yeah, there were two, okay.
It's a good talk to the water company, they can't do anything, we have to do it. Wasn't in the plan, I'm talking to the.
Joan, can you hear? Yeah, Stan, I'm going to need you to talk out much. And Paul, we gave you as well.
Sorry, Ms. Joan, but if your face were showing, I would have spoke up loudly. If, if everybody comes to the meeting before the meeting starts, you can see Joan's face on the camera, but she takes it off, and then, and the meeting starts. I told her I wouldn't come to any more meetings before she showed up. On the screen board, that didn't work. Um, so, that's where we're at with that, we're looking at that too. Water is, it, it's gravity fed, they're, they're not pumping it in there, so that's probably one of the lowest, um, Fishtown, it's one of the lower areas. Uh, so there's a big head, uh, coming down there, head pressure is pretty, pretty great. If, we've seen it jump up to about a hundred and five pounds in a couple of cases since we started looking at it, so. Parts were ordered as of today.
But it was covered by insurance?
Insurance, yes, we had, we got the bill of twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe, project cost us seventy-five.
And then the second one, do you do know anything more about the second one? Was that similar? The pitch, we saw, we don't have a final number.
I don't have a final number.
And of course, the second.
Now backing up just a little bit. The sewer project at Fitch.
That was done at, yeah, within a couple of weeks, at the beginning of the summer, right, from the beginning of summer. Sewer repaired down the vintage section, near the weight room and locker room to high school.
And the, on the way to field lights?
Field lights are, um, we're waiting for the schedule, but we have an agreement that with Musco, that the project will be completed by the end of calendar year. Spring, hopefully we have lights in spring, certainly by next fall.
Sewer project, are you ready to get some kind of approval from the contractor?
Yeah, they, they, they had to actually work with the manufacturer of the roof, wanted to work on the roof, so they, they had shared with the manufacturer exactly what they're doing there, and manufacturer will actually send the, an inspector out at the end of the project to identify any issues or.
Thank you. I'd like perfection design, fabrication, and construction, and I'm not going to get it, that's fun. So at some point in the design process, somebody specified these appliances. It sounds like they presumed a certain water pressure in the building. It almost sounds like somebody should have known what the water pressure was going to be, and there was an oversight there. So you saying that we're out twenty-five thousand dollars, you're sick from this, and then the rest of this covered by insurance, but what are we out because of this?
Well, the insurance company is still coming down to investigate one of those two.
Okay, so I, I wouldn't say that we're out until they say we're out. But I mean, the first twenty-five thousand dollars of expense that comes out of our pockets.
Yes.
Like I said, I don't expect perfection. But I would think somebody, some somewhere along the way would say, well, you know, we're specifying this product. And that product has technical data, the technical data would include the water pressure which, in which these things can operate, I don't think. So just a guess, somebody missed something.
Without being engineered, designed, that system. Somebody who specified this piece of equipment, some, somewhere along the way, if, if that is what caused the problem.
Yeah.
I know that the other school, the sister school that actually has low water pressure, we had to pump them in.
We have the opposite problem.
Yeah, it was just the opposite.
We just don't want another one to go.
No failures there.
No failures at high school either, where we've installed the same.
But two failures where we said high water pressure in the same room. So it's either dumb luck or there's defect of the equipment, that we just happen to get two of these things go, or it's the water pressure. And who was finding the story on that? That came from the architect who had someone else prepare this, it was an oversight.
Thank you, Dean. Matthew?
Do you, when, when we come to get an engineer to see if it's possible to let the book of lectures to remain this.
Yes.
Any other questions that, um, what Sam reported? Okay, Sam, do you want to talk about this food service grant?
Yeah, so, um, Chef Kashmira cooked up some more, um, grants. He has received a grant thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for equipment, it's called equipment viability. And this money will be used to marry Morrison's school kitchen, he's going to be replacing some equipment there, so we developed a food processing space there in a kitchen in Mary Morrison. For the farm to school program, so take care of vegetables, it may take care of vegetables that we get from some of these farms, like carrots, corn, broccoli, things like that, so they'll, they'll clean them, they'll blanch them, they'll season them, and they will cryo back them. So that in the colder months, when these vegetables and foods are not available, fresh on the shelf, that we will have local, fresh frozen foods for our students.
Very well done.
That's right.
That was rare. And Shannon Weigel, she's amazing, her grants. Dean, I'm going to recognize Dean and then Jay.
I'm sorry, all I could picture all of a sudden is an episode of faulty towers.
Thank you. Jay.
This is a competitive grant? So it's just have to be a town body?
I don't think it's high enough to go. I think, I, how much, what was it?
Three eight thousand five.
Oh, it does meet the, oh, Jay, thank you. But this is a, but the, but Ernie's program is a what is the word I'm looking for, financial, like it's a, it's not tied into the, it is tied into our school system, but it's its own entity, right? It's like this, what?
Off the books.
It's not off, enterprise, enterprise, right? I was thinking Star Trek was all that I could come up with, um.
It has its own books. Not two sets, just one set.
But is it, but does an enterprise also have to go through? So the town staff and my staff are meeting on next Monday, so I'll find out. All right, I will, um, I will, I will get that on, as you know, I sent a note to our other bodies, um, um, today about our other grants that we, um, just, just one. Any other questions for Sam? Cause he's tired because he's slept overnight here, right?
I didn't, so I didn't sleep, I stayed awake.
You stayed awake, waiting, waiting to see.
I was checking my notes.
Yeah, waiting. All right, so I'm going to move us on to committee reports, um, policy. Policy, yeah, for the second meeting, we have, um, protection of undocumented students, and I think that we covered this. Okay, um, curriculum?
Hey, I'm here, can you hear me?
I can.
We met, uh, I think it was last week or so, we went over two more curricula, we're going to have those presented to you next, to be voted on next month. We're wrapping up to make sure that we have the summer things that was going on throughout the different, you know, all those twenty-seven different groups and, um, our different curricula that was modified so that we can make sure that, you know, everything's still aligned. Um, we're getting ready to, you know, wrap up our session.
Wow. You guys are not doing much, are you?
No, gosh, you know, just a couple of things.
Thank you for your work, financing facilities?
We met on September fifth, and we covered, a lot of that we covered in the last C W. Yeah. Which was the budget timeline. C I P proposals.
That's, that's one might putting in. And commu- communications?
We had a meeting just before this meeting, uh, Phil, the first time this B T O, uh, council invitation. Phil's been in touch with the P T Os, they want to meet after they had their first meetings this week, so Phil will be reaching out to them to, um, for the October twenty-third meeting, we're going to invite all the P T O, uh, soon, and see minimum talk on our part, and what they would like, and because of the hope, and see what we can do. Since this is where I am, Kim, which is marketing to attract new families to settle in Groton. Conversations, we've seen this as an activity, but also the useful, the talents that family could have. Having documents describing our system to be attractive, to be something economic development department, unions have been online. They, other than just a brief reference to our school system, there's nothing there. We can see this going to families, to brokers, we see it going to charter people, it seems like new hires. I asked the, the community, they were comfortable with that, and I, we can apply for that, and, uh, to get them on, but you know, we can.
It's a cost share.
It's not my budget.
Yeah, well, we're trying. The third thing that we probably not going to get to for several months, but it's on our agenda. To look at feasibility of making the alumni association a functioning body. This source, uh, additional, we want to move into cheer on our students and help them in the future. Maybe there are recent donations, but that's not the, really strengthen and clean the relations. So it was suggested that our first step would be guidance council to that's future, and that's what we want.
Another, like, po- policy, curriculum, financing, facility, and communication, yes, so don't do much. Wow, a lot of work, thank you guys, really, seriously, thank you. So negotiations, we are, um, still in, um, uh, flux in terms of for the mediation, our date has been set, and I think that that is at the very beginning of November. Um, I am going to be asking for a meeting with the negotiating team, um, just to kind of go over our thoughts in the fact that it's going to be, um, the beginning of November, and, um, the board will look very different, uh, at the beginning of December, and so what does that, what do we do, what does that look like? And so, um, be prepared to be hearing from me in probably mid-October to have a, a meeting where we can get together with Floyd and Lori about the mediation. Um, and I can't remember the date, but it's in November. Um, and Rita, Learn?
Yes, um, we had a meeting last Thursday, and, um, one of the things I wanted to mention that I believe, um, we're probably going to have to adopt also as a board is that the state approved the flexibilities for implementing the Connecticut guideline for educator evaluation twenty-seventeen. So it's a new type of that evaluation from our teachers, and I believe we might have to pass that as a board. Susan, I'm asking Susan.
Well, we certainly want to show the board what, um, the flexibility plan, we've actually been working off a flexibility plan since COVID. So they had relaxed the guidelines, so it's.
But I think it's something new now.
We, we will inform you, absolutely.
Yeah, and also the teacher residency program, which Groton is a part of, forty-five new additional teachers in the state of Connecticut. Um, were hired, which is wonderful, so that helps our diversity workforce. And also the board approved the purchase of one dollar for Learn to purchase fifty-one Daniels Avenue in Waterford. It's where the old Southwest School was, and they're going to purchase it. Um, remediate it, which will probably cost about a million, and then hopefully build a proposed new infant toddler and pre-K school there. Where eventually they'll have, when they're going to have to close the Friendship School, because Waterford would like it back. And also, um, they'll also have House of Transition Academy for students who, um, are not prepared, you know, don't need to go to the services at Ocean Avenue Learning Center. There were a lot of other things, we had an update on the, um, their opening of school year, the teacher of the year is the marine sci- um, a teacher at marine science, Catherine Howard, who has been recognized nationally for her work. And I think, you know, there was, there was a really busy meeting, but I think everything is good, so, thank you.
So Rita, is the, is the plan to take the, the site that's on Daniels Avenue and be like the, the
New Hub for the school?
It's kind of so.
Yes.
So that Waterford will then take, resume control over that building?
Yes.
And will move its program to the Daniels.
Yeah, but it probably won't be for about four years, we have to have approval for this. Yeah, you know, it's going to be a while, but Waterford would like that building back, and there's also, um, a lot of traffic in that area because of Waterford High School, and parents or preschools children, so parents drop them off, pick them up, and I think that they would like that to go away eventually, so. But they, they do have a couple of two-year-old programs now at, um, the Friendship School, and all the kindergarteners have been moved to the magnet, um, multicultural magnet school, so it's really an early childhood center there now. And, you know, people from Groton can apply to go there, from any of the surrounding districts, it's a wonderful program, it's four thousand dollars for the year of childcare and schooling, and the classes are ten to one. And they get all the services, and they have gym, and they have art, and i- it's just fabulous. So if anyone works in that area and has a preschool child and would prefer to go over there, they are welcome to. They have, they have a lot of applications, and it's, they have, I think, five hundred slots.
Thank you, Rita.
You're welcome.
So I talked about the town and city council, R T M Board of Ed liaison, that's going to be October fifth, I believe. On the A G S A, D E A Board of Ed liaison meeting is also in October?
October eighteenth, Kim, at four fifteen.
Thank you, friend.
You're welcome.
Um, Groton Scholarship, Liz?
Nothing yet.
Okay.
It usually doesn't happen, Kim, until like November, December.
Okay, I'm still going to ask because my mind doesn't work that fast, remember, I'm the one that went to the annex today.
Yeah, no worries.
Um, athletic fields?
They have not met since our last.
They do not include the backfield. Okay.
And, and we cannot hear Jay, is that was Jay, right?
That was Jay, and so I asked him about the athletic fields, and they have not met, and, um, but there's been a lot of activity by the rec department, look, um, talking about the field work, is that, is that fair?
Oh, great.
Okay. Um, trails?
The trails committee met this month, uh, on the cop, uh, family park, uh, hard surface trail to the blind, they have engaged some of our students as volunteers in two ways, that they're very happy with them. And Mark Berry indicated that, uh, he would not object to finding more student volunteers to work on other projects. This was not part of the trails meet, the second piece is not part of the trails meeting, but it comes out of Park and Rep. And we recall, within months after I first came on the board, I had mentioned that possibility, uh, helping the academic recovery by working in different locations, and Groton Community Center, that's Park and Reps, has a, a questionnaire out, it says, you're interested in working on other classes and services to support wellbeing, easement, things like meals, screenings, blood pressure, cooking classes, and homework health. Health, so I'm going to pass this on to Susan.
Okay.
And with the hope that we can see if there might not be some collaboration at the old Fitch High School, middle school.
Thank you, thank you. Um, and library?
Library, uh, the one card project is stuck. Library, uh, the One Card Project is stuck. Uh.
Still stuck.
The, the problem is that the live, as I understood Jennifer Neal, the director, to say. The problem lies primarily with their software, which doesn't like any other software. They're very grateful for Quentin, what he's done. Uh, she would be very willing to come to the board and have her and Clint explain what the problems are and what the solutions might be. Haven't had a chance to tell Quentin this yet, but Jennifer would be very glad to come through.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the government school building, have, have they met, Sam? Okay, and then the State Council of Educational Opportunities for Military Children?
November sixth.
November sixth, so um, the last meeting in November will be when we can hear about that. All right, so I'm going to move us on to the consent agenda. Um, and consent agenda is all matters listed under the, the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Um, and I will accept a motion for acceptance of the consent agenda.
So move.
Thank you, Liz. Um, yeah, move. Thank you, Rita. Um, Andrea, are you seconding the? Uh, right, um, any discussion about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion has carried. So Joan, um, Matthew is going to go to abstain.
All right.
All right, thank you, friend. Um, Jay, would you be willing to read the motion for Old Business Number B, please?
I move to approve policy P five one one, one point three, protection undocumented students. As a second reading.
Do I have a second to this, please? I've got William. Um, Susan and, and Andrea, or Andrea and Susan, do you want to speak to the second reading?
You go ahead because.
Well, clear. Well, it, it was actually a new policy, and it's something that we had been planning on looking at, just really. So that students um, who arrive to us are protected under the law and that um. You know, that all their rights are protected as well, and so um. You know, it's all in green, so it was really a brand new thing based on the law, and the regulations are set forward as well. Um, and it really notifies the superintendent should someone come asking for a child, but in all of our schools, I go back to. Um, our, we never turn our student to any other adult unless they're verified as, you know, a parent or someone who has the. You know, ability to intervene, so that's just our practice, is that schools are kind of safe havens for our kids.
And I, I think the important thing is that even though the ICE officer would come. The decision of, we would never turn over a child even to the um, to the ICE officer. Because without a court order, without something actually from a judge. And even at that time, that would have transpired with that child, it'd go through you and the attorney.
Any other questions about this policy? Dean.
It was neutral on its face. Forty-one-year-old decision, a platter decision, but now we're very interested in this. See, this is a piece of. Based on. If not, it's a gesture. ICE is not going to come to our schools unless they're looking for human.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Any other discussion? All those in favor to approve the policy P five one one eight, non-resident attendance as a, as a second reading? No, I'm sorry. Wow, let me try this one more time. The motions on the floor is to approve policy P five one one one. Dash three, protection of undocumented students as a second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain. That motion has carried. William, would you be willing to read the motion of, under new business number, the motion number one?
Motion to approve policy P five one one eight, non-resident.
So Susan and Andrea, can you please speak to this?
Let's see.
Well, I'm looking for it, and I don't see.
Excuse me, Kim.
Yes, Joan.
Second after William.
Uh, I, I'm, good question. Who seconded? Um, my very good friend Matthew did.
Thank you.
Good catch, Joan.
So we have actually had a non-resident student's attendance policy. And we have four students currently that are tuition students coming from Westerly, Stonington. Eastline now too, so if students want to enroll in our schools, there is a tuition cost if they are not residents of the school. Um, we have talked about intra-district magnets within our school district, inter-district, we're not allowed for a long time. Um, but we, we can investigate that as an option, because in the state it'll help cover the cost, but every year you all vote for tuition fee. For each of our schools and for special education costs, so um. You know, parents basically reach out to me, um, to the superintendent's office, they might reach out to the school. In the most recent case, it was a student who had been at Fitch and went through all of that, as they moved to Eastline. He went to Eastline his junior year and wanted to come back this senior. So um, you know, we do make provisions in that, and um, there was some language that we actually took. Out of the policy, the original policy, and in writing this, we use the Cade model. Um, to really take on new legislation that had occurred and make it updated. And a little clearer.
Is there questions or concerns about this?
If I could just say that we're going to ask that. We're going to ask that, this, this come back to us because the um, policy that went out into the ether. The one that had all of the um. Corrections on it did not get to there.
Okay.
So the content will not change. It's just making it parallel and making it sound like we're professional educators and that. Other.
Okay.
And I really appreciate Susan's help on this because.
I didn't think so, that it was the older version.
Oh, well, that's because I, I looked at it carefully for that. I really appreciate your help in this because you're much more articulate on this than I ever will be.
I don't think I can get that phrase, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anything else for discussion on the first reading? All right, hearing none. All those in favor to approve the policy P five one one eight, non-resident attendance as a first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain, that policy is passed for first reading. All right, um, under new business number two, Dean, would you be willing to read the motion?
Uh, certainly. There is no motion. I can wrap the motion. I checked off the log.
Welcome to my world, sir.
I move to recognize October second, twenty twenty-three's National Custodian Day, right, superintendent's school to send a letter of appreciation. Custodial staff.
Second.
Uh, sorry, you usually don't, so if I don't, I don't usually pick on you. Um, a- any discussion on that?
Oh, I can't think of any one anymore.
Oh, they certainly do, after this summer, and all that they've done.
And all that they do.
And all that they do. And will do.
Yeah, let's get all the.
Wait till the snow days.
Okay, any other, any further discussion? We are getting a little bit punchy. It's eight oh five. Um, a- any further discussion on this? Hearing, no, no further discussion. All those in favor of a, uh, the motion to recognize October second to twenty twenty-three's National Custodian Day. And to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the custodial staff, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that motion has carried. Our next third new uh. Um, agenda item is that we received a, and that, a, a letter. Um, from a gentleman who would like to have the baseball field named after someone. And per our Board of Ed policy, um, a ad hoc committee would need to be formed. Um, by, obviously by me, but I decided I would just do it at a regular meeting to form the ad hoc. Um, so I do realize that this is the end of September, and so for many of us. Um, we have October, November left on the board, um, so I don't know how the board. Um, wants to do this, about whether we would like to kind of put this on pause for the ad hoc. And have the new, the new sitting board December kind of create an ad hoc committee, or at least to begin to get this one going. Um, because I know that for me, this might be part of a larger conversation in terms of. Um, I know in the past, we've had people wanting to name other, other fields, um, and I think. Um, I was talking to someone recently, and they talked about like, you know, different parts of school buildings. Um, and I, and I did check the policy, there is not a policy about not naming it after someone. Um, so we don't have that, because I think that there, we had a big discussion when we looked at the names of the schools, that we didn't want to name it after one person. That we kind of wanted to, and as we did, the regional rivers. Um, so what is the will of the board? Do we want to establish an ad hoc committee, or do we want to put this on pause? Um, for the next, the next sitting board, um, which will be in two months.
Can you spell the difference if the board wants to have a committee? To authorize a committee and leave it to the new board to sign names?
I think it's, to be honest with you, our policy says that the chairperson can just assign an ad hoc, so I could have just done quickly an email and stated whatever, so I think in this. As Matthew, it is just putting it on pause until the need.
The one clarification is I have no idea what to say because there's no signature.
I'm, I'm not quite sure if that, um, I, I think we have that somewhere, um, but I don't necessarily feel like it's just someone has come. Will need to, obviously, the ad hoc may want to like get more information from this person. Um, but I just think that there's a lot of, I just think that there's a lot of thinking about. And pausing around naming fields, um.
And we did name the library at the new middle school after Dr. Mitchell.
Yep, but we didn't do buildings, but you're right, you're right.
No, I don't mean buildings, but I meant fields, libraries.
Yeah, and we also did James, Dr. Mitchell for the high school.
Right.
Yeah. Jay.
I, I just remember this, this is actually.
I can't hear Jay at all.
I, I just recall that when this came up before, the, 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 the fact that a, a family had donated, I believe, over a million dollars to the field. Came up that whether or not we ever. Hammered out whether or not there were any restrictions on that, which I think that's part of, you know, what's been discussed in the past.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, so I, I think in light of that information, we probably to, before we, I. Before we even, an ad hoc gets established, probably to find out whether we can even do that or not. All right, I'm not quite sure how to go about.
I can have Joyce start to look through the meeting schedules. Do you know about when that field was constructed?
Uh, uh, Rita, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Rita, do you remember when we did the field for the baseball field?
Yes.
Do you remember what year it was? Was it twelve, thirteen?
Yes, it was, it was back around two thousand and twelve, when the schooner, when the, the. The, the college kids came to play there.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
It had been nine years ago, or maybe eight years.
I'll have Joyce look at all of our historical information.
Yeah, there was one gentleman that did donate a lot of money, and now they're not even playing there anymore. They moved to Norwich.
Yep.
But we have the benefit of the nice fields.
Right, that's right. Okay, so um, I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to table that for today, this agenda item for today. We're going to get some historical information about whether that's, this even makes any sense. Um, and then, um, I am, then we'll get consensus, I can get consensus from the board about whether we just. Kind of put that request on pause and, and have the new board, the new sitting board kind of take a look at that. That would be my. That would be my um, sense of that. All right, and so we're now at the information and communication. Rita, since you are right there, I'm going to.
I'll pass, no communications.
Liz?
Yeah, um, Sam, I have to apologize to you. You're going to get an email from me tomorrow. Um, I meant to send it to you earlier, because I had a parent. A grandparent reach out to me about a transportation issue. And I'm, I'm sorry, I just didn't get it to you, Sam, so I'll send it to you tonight after we're done, but that's really it.
Okay, he's usually up all night, right?
Yeah, I, I know. He, he's moved his bed there. I mean, seriously.
Jay, do you have?
First of all, I just want to thank everybody who's involved with the latest DODIA grant for one point two five million, Shannon Weigold. Superintendent Austin.
It's a team effort.
Everybody on the team. And this is a, a string of the DODIA, the Southern Defense Education.
This is number seven, but who's counting this?
And, and again, this is something that supports students in our staff and reduces the burden, you know, on the taxpayer. Helps our students. Um, and then secondly, uh, I'm sorry that I wasn't here earlier in the meeting, I think this was already announced, but. I want to congratulate Superintendent Austin on receiving the Betsy Carter Matt Leadership Award. And some of us will be going to the Connecticut Council of Leaders in Mathematics Thursday, to see her receive the award, so congratulations.
She was one of my mentors.
William? Dean?
Um, I've been asked to note that Zoe left abruptly because she got a call. With a fire call. She, she monitors the, so she's on duty. Uh, and also as an aside, that she wanted to speak with the superintendent about something. I guess she'll let you know.
Matthew?
Like to add, I mean, so after this, so we've had a chance to look at the brochure I gave her. We can put discussions, collaboration, your work and utilization space of the elementary school. Artificial intelligence is something that for better and for worse is promised. I shared some articles that I'd read with Clint. You've already seen some of them. And I would love to invite Clint, this is probably after the new board is seated at some point, but. Invite Clint to share his perspective, to give you the deep thought. And finally, I'd like to add something for projected budget costs for the NDCC after the period of assistance comes to an end.
And finally, I'd like to add something for projected budget costs for the Indian DCC after the period of assistance comes to an end. I don't know how long that period is.
For what?
With the National, uh, General Defense Cadet Corps. And that does not require action of this.
Are you making sure that you have that?
I know.
Okay. Um, Andrea?
I have, the only thing I have is, um, To make the announcement that, uh, October nineteenth is the Dr. Martin's King Dinner. And three of our high school students are being honored among the, the nine others, and that, that is Catherine, who is here today. Johnny Grab and our other representative to the, to the, um, board, Calvin McLeod. So we'll be celebrating with them.
Yeah. Um. So, uh, I'm gonna like ditto what, um, Jay said about congratulations to Susan and also congratulations to Susan and her team. For the, uh, for the acquiring of the DODIA grant. And I am looking forward to hearing about how that progresses and what we're sort of gonna be using that for. Um, and, um, getting our partners in the other parts of the town to be involved and get excited with us. Um, I just also wanted to see if we can make sure that if there are any more open houses that are gonna happen in the next couple of months to make sure that that's in the board notes. Was it in? Um, so in case any board members want to attend any of those, um, and then also just to, um, let people know that, um, The ad hoc committee that started multiple years ago, looking at the bylaws, um, for the, the board, um, policies, which is the nine thousands. We are busy, um, and I just want to let you know that we are gonna have a very busy committee of the full meeting. Um, where we're gonna not only hear from our secondary, um, people talking about, um, the data. But I'm also going to do a short overlay about the nine thousands, about what it was. And what, what we're thinking about, um, so that we can get prepped for the first reading in October with the second reading of the policy in November. So that the new board coming in will actually have, uh, freshened up, um, these, um, since the last revision was in two thousand and fourteen. So, um, I'm, um, that is what, so I just want to prep people for that. That is all that I have. Um, I do have some agenda items that you have, um, you have asked for, um, and that is. Matthew, it's you, and I have written it down, um, looking at field trips, um, in the, in the committee of the full and the other agenda items. It feels like that might be. Um, uh, moving, moving more towards the wintertime conversations. Um, and, and Susan will have that so that the next sitting board can, um, can look at that. Um, uh, any other agenda items that people wanted to add? You know, finally figuring this all out. Just in time. All right, and so these are our future meeting dates are, are on, and then we've talked about the Board Liaison, uh, meeting coming up. Um, and, um, I've just asked for suggested agenda items, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Andrea. Can I have a second to that?
Second.
I have William. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain? That motion is carried. Good night, folks. Good meeting.
Thank you.